States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mary, do we have a forum?
Mayor, we do have a forum and the notice was posted at 4:00 PM on May 28, 2020.
Okay, was Ramon able to log in yet?
Actually Gio is on his way over there.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I believe Ms. Judy Freeman had a comment, a little comment. Megan will take her off mute.
One second, please.
I'm glad Judy's on, we've had a good discussion back and forth on noise ordinances.
Here I am, hi there. Hello, Mayor Ramos and Mr. Stevens, Mr. Zimmer, thank you for responding so well to my emails. I'm calling concerning excessive noise coming from, I believe at this time, from the Oak Crystal Bar on weekend evenings, way past a normal hour around, starting at 10 and going until sometimes as late as 1 o'clock. I'm concerned that because we live in a bowl, that it, we can't sleep with our windows open, and which we do frequently. And I have a letter here from another Alpine residence out of town, Anne Wilson, who I believe, I don't know Mr. Stevens, is she one of yours, but if I could read that. And I also have another person, Janet Stewart, who's trying to get into the meeting but wasn't able to log in. She sent an email to Ms. Solis.
And that was on the same, on the same subject, right, Ms. Freeman?
I'm sorry, on the same subject, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I read a portion of this letter real quick, I only have three minutes?
Yes ma'am.
It's from Ms. Anne Wilson, who lives on Lockhart and Cockrell. My name is Anne Wilson, I live on Lockhart Avenue and have for 15 years. One of the things that I really loved about my living in Alpine is the quiet and respect that residents have shown for one another. We live in a bowl, basically, and noise, especially music, is that is amplified by that phenomena. As a community, we should try to control the noise that can be controlled, particularly after hours. I believe there is a way for us all to be happy and it shouldn't come at a cost to the taxpayers who are tired from a busy day and kept up by the music. Music does not have to be played at such a level to be enjoyed. And it goes on, but I won't waste your time. It is really unbelievably loud. I can't sit on my patio and carry on a conversation with friends, I can't go to sleep at 10 o'clock, 10:30 like I'm used to because of the noise. I believe the police department's got lots of calls from us and I've written Rick and Mr. Zimmer about this matter, so. Anything else you want to add? You have to be on the agenda. We'd like to know what you believe might be a reasonable time that we can all agree on, that they can shut their doors, turn off their outside speakers and cut out the outdoor bandstand music that they have playing late at night that is extremely loud.
Okay.
We're thinking 10 o'clock is a good reasonable time.
Okay ma'am, I, you know, we'll have to look into that and then we'll have to get the council involved, all the council involved on this and kind of look at it and see what's a reasonable time and address the issue with you and we'll, we'll certainly get back to you, letting you know what the outcome has been.
It's on the agenda tonight, Mayor.
Very good.
Mayor, yeah, we do have it on the agenda this evening in information and discussion.
How about that?
Janet Stewart's email about speaking as well, she should have had an email, Ms. Solis should have had her email before the meeting. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevens, I hope y'all can come to some resolution soon.
Thanks Judy.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
I also did receive an email from Karen Cantrell. I know she's having issues logging on.
Do you know what her topic was?
Yes, give me one second.
Forward that to me real quick, Megan, I'll read it to council.
Okay, I can do that, sorry, I'm working off of two different computers. It's a little hard to go back and forth.
There it is. Ramon, you made it.
Okay, Eric, you should have. It's also in regards to the loud noise.
Yeah, I don't have it yet, Megan.
I can read it, I do have it up. I have looked at the code of ordinances and found two ordinances that pertain to noise. They are section 94-31 and section 94-33. My opinion is that part of the beauty of our area is the quiet and solitude, so I think the ordinances should be enforced more often. As written now, every motorcycle vehicle with an altered muffler, no muffler, or the ones with the timing set so low that it sounds like it's missing loudly should get tickets. These motorcycles and vehicles violate ordinance section 94-31, A and B, and ordinance section 94-33. Another point of concern are the sirens at parades. This has to stop. I remember a situation just a few years ago when I went to get some sandwiches at Subway. On my way home, my friend called and told me to be careful coming home because, as he put it, "All hell is breaking loose." He told me that there were so many sirens going off that it sounded like an invasion. It was the Christmas parade for that year. A couple of friends told me that this kind of situation occurred during the Memorial Day weekend as well. Most emergency vehicle sirens create 110 to 120 decibels when turned on. That can be damaging to anyone's hearing, especially children. Sirens for emergencies, not celebrations. Thanks for listening, Karen Cantrell.
Hey.
Thank you, Megan.
Any other ones?
Not that were given to me.
Okay.
If we get more in, Mayor and Council, we will forward those out to you individually via email, okay?
Okay. All righty, then let's go ahead and move to the presentations and recollections and proclamations. And I do have one, and I hope he corrects me if I mispronounce his name, and it's a certificate of achievement for Joe Free Calderon, better known as Gio, Administrative Department, in recognition of your award from Saul Ross State University for Outstanding Undergraduate Student in Business Administration, signed on the second day of June 2020, Andres Ramos, Mayor, City of Alpine, Texas. And I talked to Gio earlier and I congratulate him on this achievement. He ought to be a proud young man and I think we all need to support him and congratulate him.
Yeah, the, when we've been working through updating the COVID resource page and, you know, our website, Gio, Gio is the person behind that. He just does a fantastic job for the city and really super excited to see him doing well on his studies and academics as well.
Right, absolutely. I'm happy for the young man, he's got, he's had a great future in front of him and he's helped us out tremendously, especially a lot of us that are illiterate with the computers. He's pretty much a whiz kid on that one, so we appreciate that and all the hard work he does at City Council.
It's been great to see Gio grow along the way as he's expanded his, his engagement capability, so well done Gio.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Congratulations Gio.
Yes, congratulations.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move into the report section. I don't have anything to report. You have a report, sir?
Yeah, City Attorney Report, Megan will put that up on the screen for us, Mayor.
Okay.
Can everyone see it okay?
Got it.
Mayor and Council, we've all struggled to deal with Zoom and the mayor with some emergency responsibilities and other things that have been new to us because of the COVID, COVID-19 problems. And so the, Eric and I were talking about, let's, let's try to use this maybe as an opportunity to see if, what, what we like about what's happened and ways that we could try to improve things in the future. Just lost my computer screen, can y'all still see me?
Yeah, we can see your eye.
Then I'll just go forward, the, as, as we've all learned from the, from the, all these problems, is there's a lot of yakking out of New York and Washington about things, but it, everything falls down to the local people to deal with the issues caused by the COVID epidemic and the issues of the pandemic and how we deal with it. So, we're thanking that, we'd like to recommend to our state senator and state representative, whoever they might be next year, since we're gonna have new ones. Keep going with some of the emergency powers that the governor has employed, some of the emergency powers that he's given down to the, to the mayor and to the cities. So, you know, one of the things, you know, obviously right now we're having a Zoom meeting and the four, we're not, we weren't allowed to have Zoom meetings and we had to have everybody in person. And so, we're thinking that maybe the, the Open Meetings Act might try to be a little bit more flexible because there might be circumstances that might require us to have a Zoom meeting in the future, not maybe because of a statewide pandemic, but because of some local issue. And we'd like to see the ability for us to have the ability to have those kind of meetings if there's some kind of emergency, some kind of issue that would make it better for the city to continue to have meetings by Zoom. You know, maybe one or two people might be absent for some unknown reason that would be a, you know, a good excuse. And so we think that some of these powers that have been used in the last three or four months could be codified so that we could continue to be flexible in the future. The, instead of having a physical presence of the corner for all council meetings, maybe we could have that suspended if there's a certain guidelines met and that could be done by legislation having a, set up what those guidelines might be to allow a Zoom meeting occasionally. So, those kind of local conditions are something that we would know about, they don't need to be imposed by the governor, but if we have a local condition or a local situation, we should be able to handle our own affairs in a responsible way. So we're gonna ask the, we think it's, it's worth it to try to have the, our leaders in Austin address this issue. As y'all know, the next session of the legislature begins in January, in January 2021 through May of 2021, Texas Legislature only meets for five months every two years. Another thing that we could, that could help us is that on some of these issues like the emergency powers and maybe having emergency meetings or other, other things, the Attorney General set up sort of a quick AG opinion hotline. Normally, to get an Attorney General opinion, it's a pretty convoluted and lengthy process. District attorneys and county attorneys and county judges can ask for formal Attorney General opinions and it generally takes about six months to get such a formal opinion back from the Texas Attorney General's office. But they set up a special, sort of a quick hotline department of the Attorney General and they let the staff there give opinions back within two or three days to answer questions about COVID and meetings and, and what to do with some of these emergency orders. And so, we thought having that kind of flexibility to ask some questions from our statewide officials might help if we're having a local emergency and we're wondering, you know, are we gonna be able to comply with the law and still deal with our emergency? We could be able to get an answer within a few days instead of waiting six months. Then finally, last meeting, I talked to y'all about the SB2 and the legislature was so proud of all the limits they put on cities' ability to raise property taxes. But, the, and, and y'all, y'all could be thinking about that as you go through the budget process. But the cities also don't collect sales tax in the ETJ and it seems to me that that's a little bit unfair to cities because most businesses and residents living in the ETJ are there, take, taking advantage of city services. As we know here in Alpine, we have water systems going out to Sunny Glen and going out all over the place. We have a lot of people at the fringes of Alpine that are taking advantage of city services, yet we're not getting sales tax revenue from them. So, it, it's probably gonna be a nonstarter with the legislature, but I think it's worth raising the issue of doing that because that's one of the ways for the citizens of Alpine to have the city get more revenue without raising property taxes. Of course, we're all sensitive to that issue, so these are just some ideas and I welcome feedback from the mayor and council with other things y'all might like to see that would, that you think could improve your ability to do your jobs.
Thank you very much for your reports, sir. Do we have any questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Rick, so Rod, how would you see some of these concepts being vetted? Would you go through TML? Because frankly, wait until the next legislative session, that'll take about four years for all that to occur.
No, I would, I would draft some of these up myself and I would submit them to, I'm sure I would submit them to TML, but I would submit them directly to our state representative and state senator. And so we'd like to, we'd like to see y'all work on these. You know, we could, there's not, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that.
Hey, hey Rod, if, just to kind of follow up there with Rick's question too, is there something we can do like on our local utility billing? So in the interim, I mean, kind of, you know, Rick saying, hey, is there something we can do in short term? Some of these are clients of ours per se, because they're already buying water and sewer from us. Is there something locally from an ordinance perspective that council could enact to?
I think there is and I'm gonna, I'm gonna study that and I'll bring something back to the council as far as maybe some additional revenue from the ETJ that's, that's still fair.
Right, because, you know, we, we do have some hotels that are outside our city limits.
Right.
And, and there's quite a few businesses out there also. So I think that'd be a fantastic idea in drafting something up and let's send it, you know, to the respective representatives for our area and also continue following up on it to make sure that they, they just don't let it go by the wayside.
I'll, I'll do some research and report back to y'all on the, the maximum that the city can do under current law and let y'all look at that and then we could use that as a springboard to try to do something with the legislature.
And as I think about implementing, it's probably, you know, bring it back to council, we pass a resolution for it, that'll carry much more weight than any individual sending something in.
It would.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you all for the input and thank you for the report, City Attorney. Let's go ahead and.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Your Honor, remain in City Council, you have a report, Megan, we'll get that up. I do have Dr. Escobar here to lead off and I know she's anxious to go, we can see the beautiful picture of her children and I know she's got some commitments after she presents this evening. So Megan, probably go all the way down to slide three on this.
Yes, sir, give me one second. Can everyone see it? And Dr. Escobar, I believe I've unmuted you.
Yes, I'm here. Okay. So, as usual, I'll start with our current active cases in our area, this was updated as of Monday, so the case numbers have changed slightly between now and, now and yesterday. So, Brewster County, we're still currently at zero active cases, remember the cases in parentheses are the ones that we are actively monitoring. Presidio County still has one active case. Ohinaga has nine active cases. However, I reached out to the Texas Health Department because there seems to be some discrepancies on different news reports on how many cases are in Ohinaga. Some places say 11, some places say nine. The Texas Health Department number is actually seven, so they're saying they have seven active cases in Ohinaga and the one old case from before, and so a total of eight. So there seems to be some discrepancies on how many there are, but regardless, the number has gone up significantly lately, so.
And that excludes the 30 that have not been quote unquote formally tested?
Exactly, so the, what I, what we recently learned was that Mexico does, does charge for the COVID test and so there are patients that are presenting to clinics and hospitals of the right constellation of symptoms, however they can't afford the test, so they are being called probable COVID and being sent home with directions to self-isolate and they're not counted as the official case number. So there are at least 37 as of yesterday, patients that I, that I was told are listed as probable COVID. We have Reeves County that still has some cases there, Pecos County were actually up to 102 cases today and we got a little bit more information on that just a couple hours ago this afternoon. So it looks like Pecos County had not only their long-term care facility tested, which resulted in zero tests being COVID positive there, but there, they have a Department of Corrections facility there and that got tested and they came back with significant number of positive cases. So, it looks like that's where that increase in cases is coming from. Now, some of those numbers may get reassigned because not all employees, for example, if an employee tested positive, not all employees necessarily live in Pecos County and remember cases are listed by their county of residence, not where they work. So some folks, that number may get reassigned to a different county as they do contact tracing and they figure out where everybody lives. The other concern is that the folks that have, that reside at the Department of Corrections facility itself, they're not necessarily Pecos County residents, so, you know, we have folks that come from various counties that end up at that, at that facility, so. Now, of course, being, being jailed, they're not going to be leaving anytime soon, so there, but there's this, this, this problem of do we count them as Pecos County cases since they are physically in Pecos County and they're not going to be moving around and leaving, or do they count them as their original county of residence? And so there, there may be some changes to these numbers, but there seemed to be not robust communication between the Department of Corrections and the Texas Health Department. And so, it took multiple phone calls from a lot of people to Pecos County and to the Health Department to try to figure out why there's such a big jump in numbers and then they finally figured out it was the Department of Corrections and so there's, there's a lack of communication happening between a couple different state departments.
Hey, hey, actor, one quick question on that, so the, the thing that we probably hear about the most locally is, you know, if it did, if a lot of those are from the prison, how many of them are employees and then through the contact tracing, how many of them are going to the, you know, the Walmart, the grocery up there, the different eateries? Because we know there are a lot of folks from Alpine and Brewster County doing the same thing.
Yes, that and with, we don't have that information yet and again, all of this information is coming from the Department of Corrections and then being given to the Health Department and then we are receiving the data, so there's a little bit of telephone happening here. So it might, we might at some point get that data, we may not, I can't guarantee that, that, that chain of, of communication is, is staying intact necessarily. But you're right, the concern is the employees that do leave that facility and go out and about Fort Stockton, even if they live in, let's say, El Paso, that because they do have quite a few employees that live in El Paso, they still use the gas stations and the restaurants and the food service industry and then hit the road to go back to El Paso. And so, even though those numbers may change, the risk itself of, of Fort Stockton itself to us as Brewster County residents and city Alpine folks is still very real. So, you're right, I do think that it, until this settles down, until contact tracing happens and they're of course going to be testing even more people because the household contacts of all of these potential employees that tested positive needs to happen now. So, I, I do advise that we minimize our trips to Fort Stockton at this time pretty significantly until they get a handle on everybody that may potentially be positive. This is an outbreak for numbers to jump from 27 to over 107 days, that's an outbreak at that prison. So, we also as, as neighbors of Pecos County need to do our due diligence and give them some time to sort everything out.
Dr. Edgar, have they even figured it out, are they inmates or are they employees that are coming?
Yeah, we, that's a good question and we just don't know yet. And, and if they, if we do, if they know, we, we haven't been told on the Health Department's side of things yet. So I don't know if that's an answer we'll ever get, but as of now, it's a question mark.
Right, because that goes back to, you know, the Midland Odessa with the nursing home. You know, those numbers, you know, on a daily basis were popping up with folks that had come down with the virus and it was kind of misleading because they were all contained in one locale. You know, so, and, you know, plus, you know, you have all your oilfield workers that come from all over the country that are working there. So, you know, those numbers are kind of misleading and people were tend, were, you know, getting a little jumpy about that, saying, wow, you know, all these people are coming down with it, but if you went down and looked at it, they were all contained in one location.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point, however, the containment is not 100%. All of the employees of that nursing home, all of the employees of this prison do still leave and go home. So there is a still significant chance that they can become infected and then bring it home or leave the facility with COVID. So the risk to Fort Stockton itself is very real. Yeah, we can't really say that it's contained unless every single person just doesn't leave that prison, whether an employee or otherwise, for a long time. And so, and that's unreasonable to expect.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying it's not real because it is real, it's happening, you know, we see it on a daily basis. I'm just, you know, I guess a little confused as to how they're categorizing this, the folks that are coming down with it and where they're actually from.
Yes, and, and we may see those numbers fluctuate a little bit in the coming days as contact tracing happens and they reassign some of these cases to different places. And again, we've had other outbreaks in other jails across the country, Cook County Jail up in Illinois had a similar issue of COVID-19 outbreak and they had a hard time figuring out how to assign the cases to which county, again, because the county of residence for some of these, some of these inmates was different than, of course, the jail itself. And so, there, we'll, we'll keep an eye on those numbers, but don't be surprised if they go up or down.
On the one on Presidio County, what is, it has one and then one on parentheses, does that mean that there's still one active?
Yes, so that, that single case that we know about, it is still considered active. I have not been told from the Health Department that they are considered recovered yet. So when, when we hear that they are recovered, then we can move that, move that number down to zero in the parentheses. So the total will always stay however many positives there are, but the active number is what we're keeping an eye on. Okay, we can go to the, yep, we can go to the next slide. I was directed to this website a couple days ago, the New York Times has been constantly improving their COVID-19 reporting website and I just like it because of the seven day average that they have. It's all of those ups and downs on our day-to-day cases and day-to-day deaths in Texas, what they do is they take the previous seven days and average it, so it makes a smoother curve. It makes it a lot easier to follow those trends. And so, I've been looking at websites to find good data and then that rolling average because I do think that that's an important way to look at data. So here's the, the cases for Texas and the deaths by day. to look at data. So here's the the cases for Texas and the deaths by day in Texas. And you can see, just looking at the red line on the top chart, that we had, it seemed like we had almost plateaued a little bit through the the last two thirds of April. And then in May, we kind of had a slow incline in cases with a sharp decrease towards the end of the month. And then again, we've jumped up again. And that that increase does coincide with about seven days after Memorial Day. So this is when folks start to show symptoms and maybe getting tested. So this may or may not necessarily be from the increased travel over Memorial Day. We'll just have to see what the next couple of days looks like. The the positive overall is actually in the number of deaths being being reported. So you can see that there's a much more significant trend in the last two weeks towards the second half of the month of May, where we have seen a decline in deaths. That is a legitimate 14-day trend that you're seeing in that downhill slope. So that is reassuring. Of course, we don't want anybody to die from COVID. So that is reassuring that we've we've been doing better and better in terms of patient care and survival rates. So that that top graph is going to be the one we want to keep an eye on. Then we can go to the next slide. So because that had such a good trend line that I liked, I did still leave El Paso in here. I took the Texas ones out because of that previous slide, but El Paso is still an area we need to keep an eye on. Again, that teal line on the the left-hand side, it does seem to have a slight increasing trend over the that's over the last month. So over the last month, you can see where they were with their daily new cases on that teal line, and then you can see where we were towards the second half of the month. So and as you have noted, Governor Abbott's orders for opening up in Phase Two for reopening Texas has really not included El Paso just yet because their cases are still not quite under control. And on the far-right graph, when you look at active cases versus recovered, it looks like it's very stagnant through the month of May for active cases. However, if you look at the very first orange bar in in the month, and you look at the very last one, we've actually doubled. We went from about 500 active cases in the first day of May to about 1,000 active cases. So we've kind of slowly doubled over that month on how many active cases we're monitoring at any given point in time. So you can see that the folks recovering have continued to increase, but that means we are still having just as many, if not more, people coming in or being diagnosed with COVID, and that's happening faster than the people are recovering, because that orange bar keeps going up and not down. So we're headed in the wrong direction still in El Paso, unfortunately. So El Paso is another place I would avoid, continue to avoid for now. And then we'll go to the last slide in my section. And these are our case counts. This is as of the end of this weekend. So we are looking at the bold columns again, comparing how many cases we have per 1,000 people. The US is at about 5.5 cases per 1,000 people. Texas is a little less than half, 2.2 cases per 1,000. And then, of course, our tri-county area, we're at 0.11 due to those two cases. In terms of testing, as of Sunday evening, the US was testing 53 people per 1,000. Texas is testing 37 people per 1,000. It puts us at the eighth lowest testing rate in the in the United States. We were ninth when I presented this last time. So we've actually dropped a little bit. And then tri-county area, we are at 22.6 tests done per 1,000 people. And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions and comments?
I have a question. I'm being asked, is the person in Presidio County, is a male or female?
I believe the press release said a female, a female in their 40s is what I remember off the top of my head.
My understanding is it was a female from Presidio, whose spouse was from Orez, and the spouse died of COVID.
Okay. So the person wasn't from Martha?
No, mother from Presidio.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Megan, next slide. Roll into our first week of our new recreation program schedule. And we've got this out on the website on Friday and launched our PSA. And Calvin and team are out there working through just, you know, different activities. And we'll get together middle of the week, talk about how things are going, and then what sort of adjustments we need to make. Chris Herrera, who is an employee up at Saul Ross, teaches kinesiology. Many of you know him. Had a good chance to talk with him yesterday. His he was out on vacation last week, but his wife also has experience developing some types of recreation programs. He also knows Calvin, and so Chris will be helping us as well. I just ask everybody to remember that this is new to our team. Our goal is to allow an environment out there where people can exercise. We are working on, you know, how do we best social distance, meet those guidelines, but not just really sit on our, you know, we never wanted to sit on our thumbs and do nothing. And so really excited about what what the team is doing this week. And this will continue to adjust. I got 35 Frisbee golf discs in this week. I actually own them myself and got those in. And Chris is working back with the university to ensure the university gives us access to use their their field up there, too. So, you know, kind of moving to the next slide, Megan, that raises a question on the swimming pool. I think obviously, right now, with what's going on in Fort Stockton, this is not the week to pull the trigger and say, oh, yeah, we're feeling more comfortable. Let's really consider the pool. So we'll come back to this on June 16. But we do have, like I had committed to council before, we do have three certified lifeguards. And really, just, you know, working on keeping keeping a good pulse on what's happening in Fort Stockton. Next, next slide.
Eric, great work on getting the activities going on in the park. Any any more consideration about getting a fire truck out there to hose them down in the hot weather?
Yes, we have talked about that. And Chief Chief and I were visiting on that. We Chief's got a call in to Mike Scudder on a couple other items. And then we'll coordinate on, you know, doing this at least, you know, one or two days a week. We do know that our Fire Squad meets, Volunteer Fire Department meets every Wednesday evening. So Wednesday seems to be kind of a better, better day to help facilitate that.
Super.
One other thing I wanted to note, too, we did open City Hall this week with the mask requirement. We did get Plexiglas up across our front areas. I did make the decision today to restrict the opening of it to by appointment only. Quite frankly, we had too many people coming in not wearing a mask. And it's not very conducive for us at City Hall without just kind of having somebody sitting at the front door. Our team is behind counters, and they have to get up and go around a wall in order to get to to the access point. And so we've we've redirected, got the PSA out this afternoon. We'll certainly will meet with people, but they need to call and make the appointment with us and wear the mask. So City Hall, we've adjusted there. I talked to Heather Aiden at the Visitor Center. She has a requirement that you wear a mask in, you know, only a couple people at a time in that lobby, bathrooms closed. She's had zero issues with people adhering to the masks. She's had a couple people walk up without their mask, see the sign, run back to their car, get their mask, and come in. A different type of of person we're dealing with that's going into a visitor center for information versus somebody coming into City Hall to pay a bill. So anyway, that's where we're at with that. The large group gatherings, certainly, you know, trying to keep people outside as much as possible. We're not renting out the Civic Center, the Pavilion. We are seeing people use the Pavilion, like this weekend, was out walking, saw a couple families using it for graduation. You know, the the thing that we continue to just ask people is, you know, be conscientious when you're out, social distance. We'll move into some more structure around renting the Civic Center and the Pavilion out as we move through the summer. But once again, really looking at Pecos County and what's happening there. School District had their parade Friday. Graduation date is this Friday, June 5. The details are on the city website. Fourth of July, Kiwanis is not planning on hosting this year. We did question on the fireworks. They're not planning on doing anything. We have had a couple other groups discuss wanting to potentially coordinate a firework display. We encourage that. If if somebody wants to pull that together, we'll work back with our Fire Department on ensuring we have the proper monitoring and use the Coconut Park facility as as has been used in years past. Always comes down to money, right? So those big fireworks are not cheap, and it just depends on if somebody wants to go out and fund that. The hotel occupancy tax fund, that's been questioned in the past. There is specific guidance from the state. You cannot use hotel occupancy tax funding for fireworks. So we certainly wouldn't go down that path. Next slide, Megan.
Eric?
Yes?
A quick question for you. I heard through the grapevine that there may be some sort of a protest this coming weekend. Do you know anything about that? You're no buying?
Yes, we are aware that a protest is being formed. They have reached out to Chief Martin. Chief and I discussed it earlier today. They have requested as a parade route. And Rod, if I'm getting off the agenda and you have to call Uncle Ontoma, then, you know, I didn't specifically address it because it wasn't on the agenda. But yes, there is a planned protest this weekend. Chief Martin does have a plan. All law enforcement entities in the region are very well aware and have been coordinating on ensuring that we do not have civil unrest here in Alpine. And I think that's the piece that that concerns me the most, Councilor Levis. And I'm sure that concerns council as well as citizens. We are aware that some of the folks planning on on attending this protest march are not from the city. And that absolutely concerns me, because I 100% believe in free speech and protests. But I do think it's important that you should protest in the city where you reside. Some would disagree with me on that, but I that's just my personal opinion on it. But we will be prepared. And certainly, some of the state agencies are gathering in some of the larger cities where there's been, you know, more egregious behavior.
What concerns me on that city manager is, you know, their outside folks, and will they be wearing the mask and, you know, and following the social distancing? You know, we've been very lucky and that we have zero here in Alpine. And, you know, that's a concern that it could be a potential for for introducing the virus to us.
Right. And they did request a parade. And so we can't necessarily deny a parade, nor would we. I mean, the going down a street versus a sidewalk is going to promote more social distancing. We are, you know, Chief is talking to them about wearing masks. And there, I know on some of the local folks that are organizing, they are talking about wearing masks. But, you know, at the state level, there's not a mandate on it. And we will encourage and work to keep things peaceful as possible.
Right. And, you know, that's all we can ask. You know, everybody's entitled to the First Amendment of gathering, says, you know, and also petition in the government. But it has to be done in a safe manner. And I won't, for one, tolerate any kind of civil disobedience here. And I hope the council supports me in this endeavor, because that's not the way to to bring out whatever you're protesting. You know, it takes the focus away from it. So, you know, that will not be tolerated in Alpine. And I'm glad the police force is well aware of it, and they're taking measures to make sure that, you know, it's it's a peaceful demonstration.
Yeah. Well, one thing we have benefit in Alpine is that we have a very nice concentration of border patrol agents that live and work out of here. We have a nice concentration of National Guard that has been stationed here. We also have several other law enforcement agencies that are here locally. And that that's always been a benefit to our community.
Right. Are they also all on board, like Homeland Security and all those folks that are that are up there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The Texas Ranger is very well aware. DPS, ICE, all of the the folks.
Okay, very good. Well, hopefully, it'll be a good and safe protest.
Yeah, at the national level, the FBI is tracking the activities that are going on across the country as well.
Yeah, and I think I had mentioned to you where they track in the Facebook.
Yes.
For any potential dangers there.
Yes.
Okay, well, very good.
Perfect. Thank you for the question. Thank you, Rod, for not halting it.
Well, I think it's important that the council hears some of that because of what's going to be going on on Saturday morning.
Yeah, good. Fire Department asset update. Really wanted to make sure council was grounded on what we show from an asset. You know, asset base that we own as the city, the interlocal agreement that the city council and Commissioners Court signed a couple years ago, talked about transitioning the majority of the county assets over to the city. And then we certainly provide oversight and run through the Alpine Fire Department. Chief Martin, Megan, Philip Fiero, and myself met with Mike Scudder a couple weeks ago at the firehouse and looked at certainly the assets there, too. And Megan, if you'll go down to the next slide. The the other piece that I wanted to make sure we get grounded on is that we're looking at, the primary reason we're looking at these assets is that we understand what we need to procure moving forward over the next five years. And as we're building our five-year capital plan, part of what we've done is we've taken a backward look at previous five years, you know, what sort of funds have we budgeted? You know, how have we spent? Certainly, we got the larger donation in fiscal year 2017 from Energy Transfer Partners. And in really knowing right now that we have a ladder truck that's not functioning, we also had an audit done by Chris Barron in the summer of 2017, and some of the suggestions that he made around the ladder truck. And then how do we transition that into understanding what we need to purchase and procure moving forward? We're very committed to that. The Fire Department right now is down about eight or nine volunteers, is what Mike was saying. And we are in the process of getting Phil Fiero certified as a Fire Inspector. And then Chief Martin is certainly getting more engaged on our Fire Department as well. Ideally, we want to get that staff back up to 20 to 25 people. So it's on our radar. Just wanted to kind of give you all a brief understanding or overview of where we're at with that right now. Any questions on the Volunteer Fire Department?
So Eric, on the whole fire asset, are we at peace with, you know, the agreement we have with the county? Are they complying with their terms and we're complying with our terms?
Not fully. Quite honestly, the other day when we were over there, the county wanted us to leave. And I shared back with the county, well, you know, y'all signed this interlocal agreement that gave us uninterrupted access.
Yeah.
So my my guidance to Judge Kano is, if y'all feel the need to to rework that interlocal agreement, have your county liaison, reach out to our city liaison, and and start mapping through that. You know, in the two weeks since then, I don't think Counselor Curry's heard anything from from the county. We are, I've asked a couple times now for a full list from the county on the assets that they were supposed to transition to us. That's been hard to get from them. But we'll just continue to Um, but we'll just continue to to work through this. And we need to understand, what I think about assets is. You know, you've got your physical assets to go fight fires, you know, trucks and equipment, but then you also have your people assets.
Yes.
And you gotta have good people there that are trained and they continue to evolve and develop. And you have to make sure both of those are working in parallel and that we're getting support. Uh, from the county as well, because, you know, the county is dependent on on this fire department to handle. Uh, things in the northern part of Brewster County, you get down to Double Diamond, you know, Chief Martin lives down there. Um, you know, we've got a lot of periphery areas around the city, uh, up to including the ETJ. So we we really need engagement there.
Okay.
Okay.
But thi- this will be a good discussion, I know, you know, the budget process will keep us engaged on that, it's. Bother some that the county isn't following the rules that we all agreed to, so we should need to see what comes out of that.
Yeah, Maria, you're our liaison, aren't you, between the county and the in the city?
Yes.
Okay, you might wanna uh start getting uh engaging in that.
The uh, the other reason I want to show this particular slide, uh, this is a preview for all of council. Uh, as we're working through building our five-year capital plan, which which I will get to you before June fifteenth. We also took this backward loo- backward look, so what was constructed here for our fire department. Um, Megan actually constructed for all remaining departments at council.
Good.
Uh, or in the city, so council will have a view of what we've done the last five years and then what we're rejecting moving forward. So we we hope that adds value uh to your thought processes here.
Would.
Um, moving forward, the last slide I've got before I hand over to Adalina is is really a discussion about the future council meetings. Certainly, uh, Rod Potton talked about the governor's order allowing us to create a quorum using both in person and remote attendance. Uh, our council chambers has a sma- smaller footprint, there's lower airflow. Um, you know, our secondary lo- location is civic center, there's poor acoustics there. Um, you know, really. You know, I want to make sure I'm grounded in what council's opinion is on future meetings and at what point. Do we say, hey, we're comfortable to go back to to council chambers? Just wanted to bring that up tonight, see see what sort of feedback. I, I certainly am not one that wants to jump right into a meeting in a room with. Um, forty people, I I'm I'm personally not comfortable with that.
Right, and we're still, you know, having seen what they say the worst of the pandemic. So I think it'd be safe to say we continue to go via Zoom and protect not only ourselves but also the public.
Well, and and the other part of it is there is a fairly extensive study done. Uh, on a group that uh. Transmitted from one to the other in a restaurant environment an hour and a half. And and what it really comes to the conclusion is, uh, transmissibility is very high when you're in a closed environment. Uh, and you have the air conditioning circulating. And in this particular study, they actually had, you know, as the air is going from one side of the room to the other side of the room, people on one side of the room. Got COVID, the people on the other side of the room did not, which talks about air circulations, which is one of the reasons I'm not going around any restaurants for a while. Because I don't want to go sit in an hour and a half and not know, you know, what all is going on. Uh, so my inclination would be to continue with Zoom until we get a better understanding. I know uh from an HVAC standpoint, there's a lot of work being done to look at. Uh, how is it you can uh kill viruses, uh, particularly with UV? Uh, as a way to go work that, so that may be something we may have to invest in if this thing continues on, which to the mayor's point. All the data says, is looking past the uh pandemics that have occurred in the past. Uh, there is the cycle that will pick back up and it's gonna tend to pick up when school starts again because we have the ultimate Petri dish. So, uh, I I'm a Zoom guy for a while.
Yeah, and that's, while we're on it, let's go down with the with the rest of the council, their opinion. I think we can get this issue resolved real quick, Maria.
I like Zoom.
Ramon?
I tend to agree with uh Councilman Stevens and um and Councilman Scolella. I I'm comfortable with Zoom and I think we should continue for a little bit longer. Until, you know, things are a little bit more in control, uh, as far as the pandemic, the uh. The challenge is going to be when we start focusing on budget. Uh, and it's it's going to be interesting when we have to have extensive layouts and. And then exchange to be able to come out with a uh. With a and a a good budget for for next year, so, but as far as meeting via Zoom, I think it's okay.
Okay, very good, Maria.
I agree, I I would prefer to do Zoom meetings.
Okay, and Betty?
I agree also.
Okay, I guess it's unanimous, uh, city manager. We'll continue via Zoom until, you know, we can find a safety uh. A day where it would be safe where we can meet again. But as for now, I I strongly agree, we need to go via Zoom.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving forward.
By the way, Mayor, that was not a vote, that was just the council.
I know, it was, I know wasn't a vote, it was just a, I'm asking opinions.
Yes.
What I asked, I didn't say it was a vote.
I understand, I'm just making the record reflect that.
Yeah.
All right, we've got Adalina up to give us, uh, I know she she sent her her files to you earlier. Uh, she's got a couple, a couple neat things to share with you today.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Louie.
So I'm doing the recycling update. And on part one is the graphs and the total data for the visitors. And I really don't see any trends in these graphs, just that we had less visitors in March and April. We closed most day, much most month, March, and part of April, we open every Thursday and Saturday. Now we're back open um every morning, Tuesday to Saturday.
Okay.
Um, also, we're proposing a tire initiative, um, that the center. Uh, will start taking tires from the public for a fee. It would take effect on June sixteen if approved, and this would facilitate. Tire disposal from residents with scrap tires or residents facing possible code violations. Um, since Tony took over code enforcement, he's been revving up um citations. And we've had a lot of inquiries for disposal for tires, um. We have inquiries ranging from four tires from people who just changed their tires or. People who have more than a hundred cleaning up properties. And um, here's the price per tire that we're suggesting.
Yeah, and council, we'll we'll have this as a resolution for you on the sixteenth, that's the magic between the, on the June sixteenth day.
But, I mean, and I think this would go a long ways because right now, you know, we're in this, under this fire watch. So dry and lack of rain, and when tires burn, they burn, they could cause a lot of damage. So it's it's great that we're gonna start this initiative in June.
Yes, sir.
So, Adalina Rick, is the amount you're talking about charging, is that sufficient to cover the cost for getting them out of here?
Yes, it is, because with our with our setup with um state rubber, we we own a container and we fill it up. We can't have more than two thousand tires in the container, but every time we receive a tire, we log it. So we can keep the number down and um as soon as it's full, we call for a pickup and they just swap. So it's a a constant, um, it's always, we we can always take tires. And and the container is twelve seventy-five um per container.
Super, good.
No, nice. And does anybody have any other questions? I can move to part two of the report.
No.
Nope, well, part two is the landfill numbers and total recycles re-diverted. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions on those graphs.
No. Oh.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thanks, Adalina, for all your work out there, I know we continuously get positive comments from the community and thanks for. Partnering with Tony on pulling that initiative together on the tires, well done.
Okay.
Yeah, great job, I get, I get a lot of compliments from the public in how professional uh the staff is out there, so great job.
Well, I'll let him know, thank you. Have a good evening.
Great, thanks, Adalina. Next, we have Mr. Rujia.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Chris.
Excellent, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm gonna give you a quick, hopefully quick, report on uh tourism and hotel activity. And then also some uh general market research uh around the nation. So in uh Alpine and Brewster County, uh, we did sort of a a survey, anecdotal survey. Of our hotels and I spoke to Robert Albers at Brewster County to get a sense of what's happening around the county. And what I'm hearing is overall, we're probably averaging around twenty-five percent occupancy across the board in both Alpine and the county. Uh, there's a pretty wide range uh from hotel to hotel. Uh, the upper range is around forty-five percent, and I got one report of two percent ongoing occupancy. Uh, I heard back also from several of the short-term rentals, they're seeing some bookings now. It's running slow, but better than some of them expected. Uh, Memorial Day, we did see a lot of activity around town. Most of Alpine's hotels had a a pretty good bump in activity that weekend. Uh, most bumped up to fifty percent, Holiday Inn in Hampton uh went up to eighty-five percent. Uh, and some hotels reported that they actually, they they had no bump at all. Um, what we we've been seeing is uh, most of the traffic is last-minute bookings, we're not seeing. Uh, we're not seeing people booking ahead, it's difficult to know what situation is gonna be, uh, day to day. Uh, and one thing that uh, Robert from the county reported to me was that they were seeing a lot of drive tourists since the national parks closed. Uh, we're not seeing the as many of the hikers and other uh that kind of outdoor activity, so we're seeing motorcyclists and people who are out for a scenic drive. Uh, but some of our hotels also reported that uh they had some motorcycle bookings canceled because they wanted to to ride in the national park. And uh, and so overall, we are expecting that we'll see more traffic starting this week with the national park uh open for day use. Uh, Megan, could I get the next slide? Uh, looking at cleaning and disinfecting protocols, what we're hearing from our local properties across the board, their cleaning procedures are uh. Are heightened, and uh, I think one of the the reasons we were seeing that that bump at the Holiday Inn in Hampton. Uh, some of the market research shows that uh, larger chains are benefiting from that consistent brand expectation. They they, people feel like they know what to expect at one of those larger chain properties. And uh, not to say that our smaller boutique properties are not clean, but just people don't know what to expect from a a business they haven't encountered before. Um, but one other uh thing in uh a benefit to those Airbnbs and boutique properties is that. Uh, there's a, there's a tendency for some people who want to book those because they're perceived as less dense. Uh, and less busy than perhaps the larger properties. Um, overall, customer expectations uh nationwide are that uh. Cleaning protocols are posted prominently at lobby doors and on websites, that in the rooms, that there's some marker or indication that. That cleaning and disinfecting has happened. Uh, people also expect to be provided with safety materials like hand sanitizer and wipes and masks as needed. And also, they have an expectation of employee health screenings, and uh, I've been communicating back with the hotels. I think the vast majority of uh properties in Alpine are doing a great job, they're uh, they're posting their. Uh, their new rules and and I'm passing on the the industry best practices as I've uh encounter them. So that all seems to be going as well as we could hope for. And so, uh, Megan, next slide. So for uh the national markets are trying to figure out what our our outlook is going to be. Uh, I looked at several different reports, uh, two of these were from uh, actually from marketing agencies. And the the first destination analysts are actually, uh, they're research consultants and all of them had a, had presented. Uh, survey materials from uh potential travelers and and also from other destination marketing organizations. Like Visit Alpine, and so, next slide. So we're looking at the intention to travel and what we're, what the surveys are saying is that seventy percent of consumers miss traveling. And want to resume, but we're also seeing a downgrade because of the COVID nineteen situation. Uh, thirty-seven point four percent of people expect the situation to get worse in the next month. Seventy percent are concerned about getting the virus, sixty-three percent worried about their personal finances, and uh. The upshot is that sixty-one point nine percent plan to avoid all travel until the virus situation blows over. Uh, we're looking at significant majorities around in the forty percent, so expecting to travel less in the next twelve months. Expecting to spend less in the next twelve months. Uh, and uh, our at, the average expected travel budget for the year dropped forty percent. And the travelers budgeting five hundred dollars or less for travel for the year rose from about twenty percent to forty-four point three percent. So there's a lot of uh, there's a lot of headwinds, let's say, economically for travel. Uh, but on the positive side for us, uh, outdoor recreation and road trips are perceived as safer. Eighty-nine percent of people feel that outdoor recreation is at least somewhat safe. Seventy-four percent feel that way about a road trip, and that's by far the best numbers for any kind of a travel activity. And what we're seeing is the uh, people's intention to travel to uh, to small towns, mountain, and state national park destinations. Uh, all of those things are going up, while cities, beaches, amusement parks, that and those intentions are going down. We're seeing uh, more people planning to take road trips than uh air travel by a long uh stretch. And that's trending upwards, and a majority of those are looking at regional over uh long-haul road trips. With the average road trip distance be, that people are expecting to take about three hundred and twenty-nine miles. So that's a, that's an average radius we can look at. Uh, we're also seeing people choosing to go back to places that they've been before. And so that tells us when we wanna, we wanna talk to folks about when uh, when they're ready, taking a trip. We wanna really talk to our existing audience, because people want that feeling of uh, they know what to expect and they know how. How uh to feel safe there. And lastly, once again, the the research shows out that that booking activity is absolutely last minute. They're seeing that people are booking slightly longer stays, but they're really waiting to book. Uh, five point nine percent planned to travel for Memorial Day weekend, I saw another report that, yeah, like ninety-five percent of folks did not travel. And forty, almost forty-three percent made their travel plans that same week, so that, just to give you an idea. And so then, Megan, the next slide will talk about local concerns. Um, looking at reopening economies across the country, forty point three people are comfortable with their economy's reopening. Thirty-two point six percent are uncomfortable, but and the trend is towards the middle. Uh, we're not seeing that uh comfortable number go up, but the uncomfortable number is going down a little bit. And that same thing's happening with the picture of when folks are asked how comfortable they feel about travelers coming into their community. Sixty point seven percent are uncomfortable with that idea, only thirteen point one percent are comfortable. And the trend is towards that middle feeling, not knowing how to feel about it. Uh, in terms of tourism advertising, now this number came from one of the marketers, so, you know, they're gonna want us to buy ads. So we could, I I don't know how much weight to put on this one, but they were seeing uh about a third of people happy to see their community advertised for tourism. One-third unhappy and one-third neutral. Now, across the board, uh, our region is a little more comfortable in all of these points than the other regions. But uh, our our own approach and what we're seeing a lot of destination marketing organizations do around the country. Is that they're looking, trying to find a balanced, cautious, fact-based approach and trying to communicate to people. What the situation is in each of the destinations, make it, so that's what I've been trying to do, is make it clear exactly. what I've been trying to do, is make it clear exactly that we are open, that hotels are open, but let people know what to expect and keep sharing those safety guidelines and see how it goes. That is everything I have right now for a tourism report. If you all have any questions?
Well, I'm glad that you're mentioning the fact that, you know, you're letting people know what to expect once they get here and not be surprised, you know, when they're asked to wear a mask or, you know, have the temperature taken or what have you.
Many of them are already surprised. Like Heather told me that today, some folks came in and were really disappointed that the national park was not open for camping. They heard it was open, and they came out with just their tent, and they really were, they were pretty unhappy. So we're, we're doing our best to get the word out, but there's still surprises when folks, when folks make it out.
Yeah.
They didn't look at the website, did they, Chris?
Yeah. You know, that's been up on the website for quite some time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Chris, that was a very good report. Thank you very much. I'm just curious about a couple of things. One is, in your professional opinion, and it's good to, to know that, you know, bookings are up in our local community, and it's certainly a benefit to our, the community economics. But have you any idea where the traveler is coming from?
You know, Councilman Olivas, I do not. But I will have, I will follow up on that. I was so focused on just the occupancy percentage, we didn't dig any deeper. But as Heather gets back with the hotels for this weekend, I will start to look into that.
And I understand, in the past, your department and all those involved in advertising have done a tremendous job in focusing on, of course, the large urban areas, specifically in the state of Texas, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, et cetera. And, but I'm happy to know that if, sure, some of that will continue, but that there is also a safety message to be involved. Because if I was from any one of those areas and I look at a Texas map and I see that the area that I could probably never run into any type of COVID virus infection is in our area.
Yes.
So, but I'm happy we're still doing some advertising, but at the same time, that safety message is important, so.
Yeah, I'm doing my best on that score to, as we, as we, as things reopen and as we indicate the new assets that are available, like particularly the front country hiking trails in the national park, every, every time we put that word out, we also put out the, that social distancing and safety guidelines message with it.
Any more comments?
Actually, if I may, Heather just sent a text message saying that the most traveled regions are from the big Texas cities.
Okay.
And she just wanted me to pass that on to council.
Okay, very good.
And that tracks with what we've seen all along. Austin is our biggest market, followed by Dallas, Fort Worth, and Houston, kind of neck and neck right after that.
That's a good news, challenging news. Let's just hope we're all wearing masks.
Exactly.
Yep, absolutely, because those are some of the hardest-hit areas, too.
Well, Houston's number one in the state.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you, Chris. Megan, you got to go next. You're in control, everything.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, it's scary. I guess I'll turn my video on. Okay. Sorry, I've got multiple computers and screens going.
That's so scary.
So, up next is finance. It is the beginning of a month and end of May, so we're in between reconciliations and getting everything updated so that we can present better at the next meeting. But I did want to kind of go over some of the things that we'd been working on, specifically our capital assets. A little background first. When I started with the city, the whole thought process was get the information into Hill Country. That's the software system we currently have. They had Jess switch software from an old software, the Deering software. None of the assets were actually in the system. There was no way to transition them into the system. There was no conversion possible. We were limited to the printout that provided the bare necessities, a very vague description, a date purchased, and the amount it was purchased. We had to guess which departments actually had it. Whoops, sorry about that. So, this has actually been the ideal project that hit perfect timing with everything going on. We've had a great opportunity to be able to do this. So phase one was really important, is our vehicles. This affects several aspects of the city. Not only each department, who owns it, where did it come from, what condition is it in, can we sell it, but is it insured? That is an expense that the city does take on, and it was good to get those cleaned up to make sure vehicles were actually insured. And the ones that don't need to be insured were actually taken off our insurance. And we have developed a great auction list to be able to dispose of these assets that the city no longer can use or is in need of. We do have a little bit of a hoarding problem when it comes to things. A lot of our departments are very creative in recycling and reusing vehicles for different parts and projects. So, we're going to get that cleaned up. Good thing Tony doesn't give us a ticket. The next phase is our equipment. This is the biggest phase. We're looking at the primary equipment, your tractors, your mowers, it's your heavy equipment, locating it, of course, identifying the ownership. Some of it does have to be insured, some of it doesn't have to be insured. Updating our master file, of course. And then, once again, to dispose of that broken and non-working asset. We do have a lot that they're just, we've hoarded them. We've held on to them, hoping one day would get it fixed, would find that antique part. Maybe we'd be able to classify it as an antique. But we're trying to get that all cleaned up. So this phase has taken a little bit longer. We started an internal spreadsheet that lists every department and their assets. We're verifying it. If anyone sees a couple garbage trucks, let me know. The city apparently still owns two. I'm pretty sure they were disposed of years ago, but being able to clean up this asset has been very helpful. So the last one would be our inventory. And I had talked to council about this once before. Inventory is everything in our asset list that currently doesn't qualify as an asset per council's description and monetary value. So council passed several years ago a $2,500 threshold. And then, of course, it has to last longer than a year. So, a good portion of our assets are technically inventory. So it's cleaning up the vehicles and the equipment. Inventory should be, and I'm locking down wood here, pretty easy. It's everything that's left. The buildings, we're not addressing. They are stone and mortar. So they're not really going anywhere. We have that list. We may look at reevaluating the value of them, updating that a little bit. But we had had those all appraised, so that section, of course, isn't on our phase list. The status, of course, like I mentioned, the equipment, we're working on that. The vehicle, we're done. We're excited about that one. And hopefully, we'll have something to present to council within the June, or June and 16th, July timeframe, to give you an idea of where we're at. We're lucky that a lot of it's not going to change our values of our assets. There are going to be a couple transfers from some of the departments that will increase and decrease. But overall, the city has a lot of assets that just, they're no longer have those values that we need to worry about for depreciation. But getting that list cleaned up will be, will be useful. Any questions on assets? The other item I wanted to bring up was, of course, our utility billing. And I know Eric had touched base on this. So our office is back fully staffed. We're no longer rotating schedules to be the social distancing and keep the 10 people under the building. 10? Less than 10 people in the building, sorry. We are open by appointment only. We do require that mask be worn. We are also still recommending that customers utilize the drop box outside. We do offer online payments for both utilities, that's your water and gas. And of course, we have ACH. ACH is the automatic withdrawal from your account. You do get the invoice beforehand or the bill beforehand so you know and are prepared to see what will be withdrawn. And of course, you can call it anytime. All the forms that are needed to pretty much handle any service that the city offers with their utilities are located online. We have new services, termination, your ACH payments, and vacation. And you can fill those out and email them to our billing clerk or our billing supervisor, and they can get those taken care of. It's pretty easy. We're trying to be as transparent as possible, get all the information out there. We really are encouraging more and more people to take advantage of the online options so that if they want to pay their water bill at 2:00 in the morning, they have no problem doing it. They just log on and get it taken care of. The other exciting aspect that we've been working on, and it's really, really, really just kind of one of my yays, is the auditing of customer accounts. We've talked about it. We've strategized about it. We've always had a few obstacles and bumps in the road. We've officially started on it. I give great props to the utility billing girls, the customer service clerks, and we're verifying so many accounts a week so that we don't become overwhelmed. There are 20, roughly 2,800 water accounts. We verify the customer information. We verify the meters, the services, the rates, to ensure that everyone's being billed properly and correctly. If we have to adjust, we make adjustments. It also allows us to initiate the combined account. So as we audit the water accounts, we verify if they have a gas utility with us as well. We try to match it by not only their name, but some of the customer information. And then we file everything together. So as we move into that combined billing, where instead of one bill for gas and one for water services, you could be one bill for everything, and you'd be able to make one payment for everything. You wouldn't have to break anything up. So this is a great step in that direction. It also gives us an understanding of where we're at with how many accounts we have, the meters, making sure, of course, that everyone is being billed for the services. They're not being skipped or looked over. It's been actually a great start. I'm hoping to finish this year, not fiscal year, but hopefully by December. As long as we don't have any hiccups in the road, we'll get all of the accounts audited and right back on track. Any questions?
Yes, Megan?
Yes.
Something to consider as a suggestion, nothing more. I noticed I get a monthly email regarding my account number, and then to find out how much I owe, go into the website, then go into password, the ID password, to find out what I do owe. And then I have the option of, you know, paying online. Would it be possible that when you send that, when that email, the initial email is sent out, it has a customer number, but also the amount? That would make easier for me to just go right directly to my bank for any check to you guys?
I can definitely ask. Those are system-generated emails through the software we use for utility billing. But I will definitely ask them if there isn't any way to alter it or add more information. I agree with that. I know when I get my cell phone bill, I love seeing the amount sometimes. But yes, I'll definitely look into that for you.
Thank you, Megan.
Megan, so when you're saying about combining the gas and the water, are you saying, and, I mean, we're just going to get like one total that wouldn't say like, this is how much is for the gas and this is how much for the water, and give you two separate amounts?
Yes, it's still going to have everything itemized on your invoice. So the gas would say one amount. It would break down your water, sanitation, garbage, and your taxes. It'd still all be broken down. It would just, instead of receiving an envelope and a postcard, you would receive one.
Oh, perfect. Perfect.
Fingers crossed.
Yes, I'm for that. Definitely.
Thank you, Megan.
Welcome. And let me get Scott up for you.
How about now?
Six. I see you.
Okay. Apologies, it's a little bit dark in here. But we had, got a lot of stuff going on. Most of it's revolving around the project that's occurring between Second and Eighth Streets with Jarrett Construction, as everyone knows, on the alley. Ran into quite a few obstacles there, but we're making a lot of progress on it. But the main focus this month on most of our work is occurring out at the wastewater treatment plant. Some of the critical components that we've had trouble with out there recently, we have on the menu to get replaced at this time. One of the big things is the sludge belt press that the city ordered last fall, and we had delivered and got set up. And then COVID happened, and we weren't able to bring people in and do the right kind of training. So we basically had to figure it out ourselves. And John Skinner gave us a hand with wiring up the electrical portion of it. And it's been trial and error, but now we've got it running the way it's supposed to run. Mike and Richard did a lot of work out there to get that running correctly. And so, right now, we're running the belt press about five days a week. The plan's to run it seven days a week, hopefully in the coming next couple of weeks or so. We're just trying to run it for a particular time period to kind of see what our bugs are going to be and what obstacles we run into. A lot of maintenance required on that machine, so we're still learning on it, but we're finally making headway on pumping a whole lot of that sludge out of the plant. One of the other focal points out there right now is the main electrical panel at the headworks. It's a quite expensive panel. It's about a $17,000 panel to have fabricated for our facility. The one we have in there now is roughly 40 years old, has a lot of failures in it. And as a matter of fact, well, it, it's running on kind of a shoestring right now. So we've kind of doctored it as long as we could, went ahead and made concessions and got the panel ordered last week. It's going to take about six to eight weeks to come in. Once we have the new panel in, we'll be able to facilitate installing the new bar screen, which arrived a couple of months ago. The holdup on that has been the faulty panel will not accommodate the electricity required to handle the automated bar screen at this time. So it's sitting next to the plume, ready to go in, but we're unfortunately kind of at the whim of the individuals who are fabricating our electrical boxes for us right now. So making progress on it. I'm happy with the progress, but we've still got a lot of work to do there. Per TCQ's directives, we've had to do quite a bit of work on the clarifiers and interior maintenance program. We've kind of put one together and started doing preventive maintenance on some of the implements. But we've been using the VAC truck to clean the clarifiers properly, unclog a lot of the popping in the plant, and getting it on a weekly rotation now so we can kind of get in on a consistent O and M. Without the automated bar screen in play, we get so many things like mop strings, large paper products, large grease products, that they just plug the popping up. They cause us a whole lot of heartbreaks out there. So in the process of putting together an O and M plan for that, and we're running that out there usually every Friday at the wastewater plant after lunch and trying to run it through all the popping and keep things cleaned out. So we had a lot of luck with the plant not short circuiting lately with that. Also, looking at drying bed restoration, we talked to the engineers in the TCQ. They said we do not require an amendment to our permit. Therefore, we're not required to get a PE stamp on anything we do with the drying beds in particular because we're just changing the filter media out. So we're, we've already put together projections on how much material it's going to take. And probably the third week of June, we'll start refurbishing those so that while we're running the belt press, simultaneously, we'll also be wasting into the drying beds to increase our capability to dispose the sludge out of the wastewater. Now, the last big thing out there we've done, it's a pretty big annual cost, but TCQ requires that all flow meters and all of the water and wastewater facilities are calibrated annually, and we have to maintain that documentation for five years for inspection purposes. And we had ESS come out of El Paso last, last week, I'm sorry, week before last, and get all of our wellheads calibrated. And we'll be here, it looks like mid-July, to do documentation and get all of our annual records together for us. Unfortunately, the last time they were calibrated was 2017, so we were kind of behind the eight ball. Unfortunately, the last time they were calibrated was twenty-seventeen, so we were kind of behind the eight ball on that, but we've got it all up to speed now except for the wastewater plant flow meters and they're on the calendar to be done as well. On the water side, uh, SCADA has been a, been a real big problem for us lately, but I think we finally may have some resolve. Uh, Mr. Zimmer, myself and Mr. Marquez have a conference call with the individuals who are currently handling our SCADA administration for us to see if we can iron out some bugs that we're still having with those individuals, but we're currently on a cloud-based system, which means if we have any sort of internet interruptions, uh, anything goes wrong with the computer at all, we completely lose the capability to operate our own system. Not an ideal situation. Uh, the company we, the city used previously has a proprietary system, which means if a component goes out in the field, if we may have the capability of going out and changing it ourselves, but we can't do it because of the proprietary hardware. So we we're kind of manually running some things right now until we come to a resolve on that. But, uh, we met with Mr. James Sykes today. He was the individual who for about the previous nineteen years has been handling it for the city. It's a radio-based system as opposed to cloud, so you don't get the interruptions you do with, with internet servers and all that good stuff. And, uh, quite honestly, we, we don't have to pay four or five thousand dollars a year for the phone service and all these other insular costs that come with it. So we're supposed to have these, uh, cost projections in from him by Thursday, Friday at the latest to present to the council at the next meeting to see where we might want to go in the coming budget year with some of our SCADA issues we've got. A lot more depth situation, but I don't want to bore y'all to death with it tonight, but if y'all have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Scott, this is Rick. We spent a ton of money on this a couple of years ago before you came on board.
Yes, sir.
What you're telling me is that may not have been a wise investment?
Well, in, in attempt to be diplomatic, uh, it, it, it really, it, it would have worked really well for another type of system. The cloud-based, uh, operations are really for systems that utilize a lot more functions than we do. We, we monitor wells and, and ground storage tanks and turn pumps on and off, but uh, the system we got, uh, this is, the city had prepared previously, uh, has a lot of high-end components that were, in my opinion, not necessary, uh, because we don't utilize them. The, the entire wastewater treatment plant, we pay every month for a, uh, an internet. Shoot, I'm gonna get lost in the terminology, but we basically have an antenna and a small tower at that location, you know, that we pay a monthly fee for. It's not even hooked up to SCADA. And there's a lot of those components out there. So we, the, the city got a lot of SCADA capability, but it was never really installed in a manner the city could utilize it the way it may have been previously sold to the city. But what was happening before is we were operating on a nine hundred megahertz radio frequency and because we have the topography in, in our area, it's the best thing in the world. If you have a straight line of sight and a good field division, you know, our antennas, we can aim them, aim them anywhere we want. We have Pierce, Upper Hill, we have these strategic locations that, that give us the capability to, to do everything we need to do for about a third less than what we really paid for that stuff. I really should have ever had. And, and to be honest with you, uh, Rick, most of the components we bought, uh, and when I say we, this is like a couple of years ago when the city did this, are antiquated. They're high-end, but some of them are now obsolete. And I have a feeling that when a lot of it was purchased, it was probably on its way out the door of being the current model of some of the equipment, PLCs and SCADA packs and things like that that we use. But basically, they got the same technology installed. The only difference is we no longer can radio operate independently. We have to call people in Leander, Texas and, and beg and plead for them to get online with us and help us troubleshoot. And even then, we have to pay them to come out and do a ten-minute job. And they, they charge us about four or five thousand dollars every time they do that. And we have staff that can handle that, but we don't have the autonomy to work on the components within their framework. And so my, my, my vision and what I think the, the best thing for the city in the long run and the short is gonna be is to go back on a radio system because quite honestly, they're not obsolete. Uh, they're much more reliable. They don't come with the insular costs that cloud-based systems do. And there's no proprietary ownership over, uh, the wavelengths and frequencies that we operate, which is to say we can go in, myself, Shane, Johnny, any of us at any time and make changes. If we want to do that now, we have to call Leander, send emails. Sometimes they call, sometimes they don't. It's just, it's really tough when we're manually operating things out there at two o'clock in the morning and waiting for the folks to respond to.
Well, thanks for that rundown, Scott. I mean, we were, we were told before, not a problem. This will be a non-issue. And it's clearly not the case. So glad you're on it. Glad you're working it.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. And I'll keep, I'll have a lot more information, um, from, uh, Mr. Sykes and from one of the other vendors we've been talking to just to get a, a low and high end of what we're looking at so we can look at it across the board and, and make a better, uh, educated decision where we decide to go next. So. Um, really, other than that, uh, it's been business as usual. The only other big project has been the, uh, the alleys. Uh, I know there's been a lot of questions about, should we do this and, and should we do that? And, and there's a whole lot of things we'd love to do down there. Right now, we're just trying to keep up with Jarrett so we don't hold him up too, too horribly bad because we only have three folks out there that are handling the service orders and this project and leaks and things like that, in addition to Johnny and myself. So it's, some of it's slow going. They've worked with us real well. Communication's been real good. So, so far, uh, we haven't had too many hiccups. Biggest part of it's been with gas, uh, which Randy and his crew have had a handle on. Um, when we went down through there, did a sniffer test on everything and where we found the old repairs, uh, we had two or three clamps on a forty-foot line, then it's a candidate for replacement. And, uh, so that's why it has led to some of the larger work down there. Every time we did a sniffer test on that one block, you go down two feet and there's another one. You go down two feet and there's another one until we stop finding them. And so it's got a little long-winded on that, but as we find anything that it's in a degraded, uh, capacity, be it water, wastewater, gas, we're, we're happy to replace it. But most of the infrastructure down there, though it's relatively old, is not in horrible shape, but the, the big thing we're running into is, uh, a lot of folks have asked, stopped me and said, hey, are we gonna go ahead and replace all this while we're down here? And I, I I try to remind them, it's, it's a lot more involved than just buying pipe and putting it in, you know? And we would have to have people, uh, out of service for TCQ testing for two or three days, depending on how samples came back and and we're talking about, about a hundred thousand dollars a block, you know? So what we are doing is replacing things that absolutely need to be replaced. Anything that's cautionary, that looks like it might be a problem in the future, we're, we're changing those taps out. But we're also getting a lot of requests for, for new taps. Or people are wanting replacement taps as well. So we're, I think we've done five or six of those, uh, both water and sewer so far down there. Slowly, they're still crawling in, but, you know, it's nothing that's keeping us from getting the job done, but we're, we're not moving as fast as we'd like on it.
Scott, we're able to take care of that one individual. I sense your direction.
I've actually got today, uh, Mr. Marquez and myself, kind of, we, we visited with it, Johnny did yesterday. Until we get back with him with a couple of scenarios. So tomorrow we have, have a couple to present to him and see if it's gonna fit his needs.
Thank you.
I think we know what we're, what he's looking for, so we should be able to get him wound down.
Thanks, Scott. Nice report.
Thank you, sir.
Got your hands full. Uh, last week I had the opportunity to talk to some of the street people and thank them for the great job they're doing out there. Folks have noticed and also that you're, uh, moving from one side of town to the other in some of these streets and, and repaving them. And I'll tell you what, those people are going like, man, finally we're getting some, something done in that, uh, in our ward. So that's a great job, you know, the game plan that you have going on that.
Appreciate it very much.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearings. We have none. And consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with a background report material on each item and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after items are not required, separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, uh, item seven A is the approval of minutes from City Council meeting on May nineteenth, twenty-twenty.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And we'll go ahead and we'll move to the information or discussion items, City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item one is a discussion, um, on our short-term rental ordinance. Um, as you all are aware, uh, we had pulled together a ordinance a couple, a couple of meetings ago for council to contemplate and it caused a lot of discussion and we, you know, went back, talked with, uh, primarily with short-term rental business owners here in the community. And in your packet, um, you know, we, we basically, uh, what Chris did is outlined, uh, the issues that had popped up at the last meeting, uh, in the emails that came in. Really laid out what those issues were and then hosted a call subsequent to that. And the second document was, uh, is titled the Short-Term Rental Ordinance Workshop. And so that really outlined comments. I thought Chris did a wonderful job at capturing, um, you know, what, what people's opinions were. I think more than anything, um, you know, as we move forward, uh, we really want to make sure that, that we engage council well on this topic. We do need to really contemplate, um, from a city, you know, do we take action? Cause, cause right now the way the current ordinances read is to run a short-term rental, you do have to have a conditional use permit. Um, that conditional use permit is a three hundred and fifty dollar fee. It has to be renewed every two years. And so, you know, some of the feedback we did hear from, uh, people running the businesses is, hey, that seems a little high. The, the ordinance that had been proposed, uh, you know, would have taken that down to, you know, a hundred dollars a year or roughly sixty percent of that price. There was certainly conversation about things like insurance. You know, how much insurance do we need to, to provide as a business owner and things of that nature? You know, all encompassing. Uh, my, my sense is that, you know, it would be nice to, to really noodle through this, uh, have some open discussion today and then identify, you know, is there a council member that wants to chair? You know, kind of working back with Chris and myself and David on a final version of an ordinance or a change of the existing ordinance and then bring that back to council. So that's really the intention for tonight. And certainly I hope the preliminary information has been helpful that you received in packets.
Do we have any, any comments on this? Rick, I see you, I saw your brain along there.
You, you would expect nothing less, Mayor.
Nothing less, nothing less.
So, uh, uh, a- a- as I shared with Eric in an email, the bulk of my afternoon was reading all of the stuff like the rest of you, trying to digest it and look at what other cities have done and everything else, particularly with regard to the short-term rentals. Uh, one compliments to, uh, Eric and Chris. We're hosting the meeting on the twenty-first. Clearly a lot of, uh, great feedback and perspective on that. And, uh, informed some of my perspective and some of my questions. So the first I have is for our city attorney. Uh, and it falls in two areas. Part of the consideration for short-term rentals we talked about in our last meeting is requiring liability insurance on the part, on the, on the, uh, a part of the short-term rental owners, uh, with a liability insurance up to one million dollars. So being the person I am, I just went out on the open market and says, okay, hey, I've got a short-term rental. It's worth X amount of money. I want to get a million dollars with a liability insurance, just to kind of inform myself on what that might cost. Uh, and for someone who's in business, you know, those are the sorts of things I would normally do. Uh, some of the STR owners have said it's expensive and may impact their business model or that have to jack up their rates. So my question, Rod, is if we do not require short-term rental owners to have liabilities insurance, what risk would it put the city in? Meaning, if they don't have it, you know, it's their issue. Is the city potentially at risk if they don't have insurance?
I don't believe so. Uh, anymore so than, uh, you at your house. I mean, I'm sure you have insurance at your house.
Yep.
If your house burns down, uh, that's not the city's fault and you don't have it. I think, I do think it's reasonable to, uh, require some, uh, some reasonable amount of insurance. Uh, and some of the comments I saw, some of the short-term rental owners weren't that upset about it because most of the responsible ones did have insurance. I was thinking that would be something not too high, so it doesn't run them off.
But that's, okay, so, so that's helpful, but you know, because, and we as council will take the approach, hey, if they got a problem, that's their issue. It's certainly not ours. And so long as the city's not at risk, my view is they ought to run their business however they choose to, uh, not necessarily something. Of course, the rest of council will have their opinion, but we would not require it to, in order to limit any city liability. So that's my first question. Second question, uh, one of the obligations, of course, would be to ensure that whatever facility, uh, these individuals are in, uh, are the short-term rentals, you know, they want to have, you know, comply with fire codes, safety and health and, and requirements. I know there are many cities around the state of Texas, uh, that require an inspection by an outsider, third party on an annual basis. But there are many as well who do not require that. And instead, they require the owner of the short-term rental to certify in writing that they can attest that they meet the health and safety requirements, including, you know, operating, uh, uh, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers and the code and all that stuff. If we were to follow that approach and not require an inspection on an annual basis, but instead require the short-term rental owner to certify and attest that they meet those requirements, is the city at risk one way or the other, whichever one of those managers choose?
The answer is no. I don't think the city has any liability if the, uh, city let the air, the Airbnb owner self-certify. Uh, I recall that I've got some comments from some, uh, Airbnb owners that say that their business model, uh, relies upon them posting on the Airbnb site. And the Airbnb site requires them to have these things. So they can't even advertise for business in, in general unless they have those things. So that's what they've told me. So I, I, I think, I think you could have it to where it would be subject to reasonable inspection if the city wanted to. When they saw some dilapidated building that was being rented, you might want to have an inspector go look, check it out. But, but back to your question, if the city did not require it, but it had a self-certification process, the city would not be at risk.
Good. Okay. Well, and, and I know there are multiple sites out there, having used them myself, whether it's Airbnb or VRBO, I mean, we've all used a bunch of them out there. Some are national, uh, global chains that use. And, and I tend to use them because I know I'm gonna get a good quality product, uh, as opposed to calling up Joe and says, hey, Joe, I see you got your house advertised. I'd like to go come rent it for, for a while. I'm probably not gonna call Joe and, and go off and do that, but not all of our short-term rental owners do in fact use a, a national chain. They advertise on their own and, you know, they in fact have a different business model. So the, the, the reason I, I raise this and Eric pointed it out, you know, one of the, uh, we have an ordinance today and thank goodness for Eric and David Hale being on board that we are not complying with. And so Eric's going through very methodically, working his way to make sure we are in fact compliant. Uh, and so I think from a city, a standpoint, that's exactly the right thing to go do. There's no question in my mind, we need to update our ordinance for, uh, short-term rentals. So, uh, the, my sense is, my put would be, uh, we need to do it to be able to make sure we know who they are because we want to be able to get their hotel occupancy tax and the requirements to pay for that, uh, because I think that's an important element. I do agree that an annual, uh, fee of a hundred dollars is a heck of a lot better than three fifty every two years. I'm not a, a, a master brainchild, but two hundred bucks versus three fifties is a no-brainer for me. So that's an easy thing to, uh, to make and go do. So that's an easy thing to, to make and go do on an annual basis. I think given the answers you've given Rod, that one of the things that we ought to do is require self certification that we meet the health and safety standards and requirements subject to inspection by the city on, on short notice. And if they don't comply, then we have in the ordinance the ability to go find someone because they will have attested and certified and basically lied if they don't meet the requirement. There certainly does need to be a, a way to be able to go work that. Relative to liability insurance, my view is, I think they're fools if they don't have it. But if someone wants to go in and run a business without getting covered liability and potentially be personally sued, all their assets taken away. My view is have at it. That's their choice. That's not a business position that I would particularly take. But if that's the choice they take, that would be the, the approach. So those are my thoughts with regard to fees, the inspection, the liability insurance. I think the, and relative to, to penalties, if they're non-compliant, meaning we do a safety inspection and they don't, they don't comply. But I think the only other questions that are on the table are parking and noise, because that's the other big items. I know the other item, we have an agenda for information discussion is the noise ordinance. You know, it might be, we, we consider putting something in there because I don't think it's unique to Airbnb or short term rentals. I think that's a, an issue that exists around the town. And being able to include something like that in our noise, noise ordinance is probably a better place to be able to work it. And parking, we have so many different parking challenges around the city. I'm relatively ambivalent on that. So that's Rick's unvarnished view of the world. I'm sure others have them, but I wanted to kind of put that on the table.
No, no parking in the front yard.
Oh, clearly no parking in the front yard. You can't park in the front yard anyway. Although I take that back, there's some that do, but yeah, clearly vehicles stay on the street or in a designated parking space.
Eric, Chris Rujia has requested to speak.
Oh no, yes.
Give me one second.
Defend yourself, Chris.
Oh, not at all. No, the only, the only thing, I completely agree in, in general with, with Rick's suggestions myself. The one thing that David Hale had brought up relative to the inspections is that since the city, since the city approved or took on the international building code in 2005, apparently that code requires the annual inspect, annual fire inspection for every business. I don't know what it takes to do a variance or a waiver on that for this kind of business. If that's possible, I certainly don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to raise that, that question that, that there's, there's the building code issue that David had brought up and I'm not an expert on it, but I just wanted to bring that to your awareness.
Yeah, it, it, it's a, it's a great comment, Chris. And my sense is, because we, the city have the latitude to define what part of the code we're going to follow or not. And in my view, it might make appropriate for variance because I am an airplane hangar owner. And my airplane hangar is in fact a business and it should be inspected on an annual basis. One of my opinions is that any hangars that we have at the airport, the owner of that who owns the building, you know, the city owns the land, we do need to do a self certification inspection because I check my fire extinguishers all the time. And I should certify to the city when I send in my, my lease check there, Megan, that, that we're complying with the requirements. And that's another one to be able to put in. So I think one of the important things to consider, I would think someone like, you know, Porters or Autozone, you know, that's clearly one that we ought to make sure we follow the requirements. But when you have a single use and an individual can do the certification, my sense is we probably ought to put an ordinance in place that modifies for that portion for those exceptions. And this could be one of them.
They would love it. They would love that if it were, if it's possible.
Yeah. Well, we got the airplane, the airport as well.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, Chief Martin did get Philip Fiero signed up for fire inspector school. And we need to have a second person certified as a fire inspector because David can't inspect his own work. If he's permitting, he can't inspect his own work. So Philip's going through that process for us right now.
Which I think is great. Yeah. I just, you know, as I think Eric, you know, the number of places that need to get done, I think it's going to swamp our capacity in terms from, from whether Philip or, or David to be able to go do that. So.
Yeah. You, you, you're right. Chief and I were talking today that we feel like he's going to be full time the first couple of years. Just, just doing that, which would be great. Philip's, Philip's a wonderful individual and he's, he's really the right, the right person for this.
Yeah. So, so part of it would be, I think Eric, that maybe they come back with a recommendation on what things ought to allow under self certifications and which are the ones that we definitely need to inspect. And that may be a way to be able to work our way into this in a way that makes sense. And put in a clause in there that says, hey, you know, with, with 24 hours notice, we can inspect any, any facility that's been self-certified. Certainly gives the city the latitude to go in and check it out, which I think is an important way to, to follow up. And I think that puts enough teeth in it that says, no one's going to pencil with it and say, I have signed off and not have to worry about any consequences. I said my piece.
Good comments. And don't other businesses self-certify themselves as far as having fire inspectors go in there and certify that, that they are safe?
No. Well, on, on initial construction, David is doing that inspection along the way. But the final inspection, right now, we don't have a fire inspector.
Okay.
Typically what happens when you get your certificate of occupancy, that is the final inspection. Cause David does in fact sign off on that one. You get your, your seal, seal certificate of occupancy, COO. So, so all that works, but after that, I, I can tell you from my hangar where I've got, you know, a $5 million liability policy, I have to certify to the insurance company that meets the code and requirements in order to get my policy signed off every year.
Right.
So I have a question. Would the city have a copy of the occupancy permit? Not just, I mean,
City does have COOs, yes.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
I think that these are all really good thoughts and I think these would make the people that are running their businesses now a lot happier than what was proposed earlier.
Yeah. And I think with what Rick is saying, you're putting the burden on proof of, on them that they have to, you know, self insure. And as long as we don't have anything that falls back, you know, and makes a city liable for that.
So Rick, were you talking, when you were saying about them having a paper or saying that all of those things are certified? Would that be like an affidavit? Is that what you're talking about? And would that be filed with the county?
It'll be filed with the city, Lucy. So as I view it, you know, when it comes time for the annual permit. So what Eric is proposing, what Chris and what's in the ordinance is an annual fee, the hundred dollar fee, which is in essence, the license and for the short term rental ability to go do that. And with that, in addition to paying their hundred bucks, they have to sign off and certify and attest that is then filed with the city when they make their payment and they get their license that, that they've met the compliance for health and safety, which includes fire and the code and all the other items. And as part of that, it just says, you know, you know, and subject to inspection on a 24 hour notice basis. And everyone should do that every year. I, I think an important part, as we've talked about in council is one of the challenges. We have a lot of good actors who own short term rentals, but we also have some who are flying underneath the radar and just hoping we don't come after them for the hotel occupancy tax that they need to be paying. So in addition to paying the state, they have an obligation to pay the city as well. With a license and registration fee, we will know who they are. And if they choose not to, and we include penalties in the ordinance for failure to comply. And you know, I think Cynthia's got Geo doing all the homework to find out what's the latest group or Chris, between Chris and Heather off worked at. You know, who are the ones that are renting places out, but are not, hey, are they on the list that Megan's got? If the answer is no, aha, send out David. Hey, you failed to meet the compliance requirements. You're subject to the following fines. And, you know, we take them to municipal court and we get them in the system. And I would suspect over a year or so, we are probably pretty close about getting everyone signed up.
City manager, when y'all sent out the letters a couple of three months ago, I think it was, did we identify more folks that were not registered with the city?
We did. We had, what was it? 74 that we identified, Chris?
Something like that. And 43 are on the registered list of those right now.
Okay.
So we even popped up from a few months ago, you know, we got it up to, to about 33, 35. And now we've, you know, we've edged up another six or seven. So.
Good, good deal.
So can you run like, I don't know, maybe like an, an ad or something on the newspaper just to make people aware again?
Yeah. What we'll do is Chris and I'll go back and work on these revisions based on the discussion today, bring it back as another, you know, information and discussion item at the next meeting. And then if everybody's settled with that, then you know, councillor can support it. We can have it out there in July, get the ordinance approved in July. And then yes, we'll advertise and let everybody know through the course of July that this is coming through.
Great.
Very good. Great job councillor.
Well, thanks. Great job to Eric and Chris for doing all, like all the really hard work. I'm just.
Your recommendations, I think that, that's going to put at ease a lot of these folks that are running the Airbnbs and such. And I think we could come to a happy medium on all this.
Alpine needs to be reasonable to our local businesses.
Absolutely. And, you know, I think we can move forward from this. So Chris, city manager, thank you all very much also for all the hard work that you've done.
Yeah. Thanks to David too. He doesn't get enough credit. David is really.
I don't see him popping up on the screen.
He is such a wealth of.
We've been running him hard. He's busy all day long.
I know. He's a good guy. Running to maybe once in a while, boy, 90 miles an hour.
There's a lot of good building going on in Alpine. A lot of good building.
Yeah. That's to our economy. Okay. City manager.
All right. Honorable mayor and city council, the next information and discussion item is around a noise ordinance, which, you know, we heard Ms. Freeman speak earlier today. We saw the, the, the letter from Karen Cantrell. And it's interesting, Chief Martin and I were talking earlier today. You know, we got into the fall and the winter and of course the outdoor stuff kind of goes away, right? We get the end of October, early November goes away. And then just as it's getting ready to pop back up, we have COVID. And so it's been very, very quiet in Alpine for the last six months. And then the old crystal bar opened up in their amphitheater in the back. They turned up the music and this has raised this item again. What was included in your packet was something that we actually had talked about last fall. You know, it's creation of a, of a noise ordinance. And then, you know, as I said, things kind of settled out. But we really need to go in and enact some level of noise ordinance. The best one that, that the team has found is really modeled after Round Rock. So that was what was concluded or included in your packet. And then it really sets, you know, call it, is it residential or commercial area? Decibel usage at each time of the day. And then specifically, how do you define decibel? So what's that standard? And then how do you measure it? And those are, are the real constructs of, of what, what we've got to put together as a community. We know the arts and music industry is very vibrant in Alpine. It's part of our identity. And how we manage through that and have that balance for the, for the residential areas as well is going to be important. And so really wanted to get feedback from all of our elected officials tonight on what do you see? Chief Martin's here on the call. He's working this and we'll be glad to, to work back with council on how do we put something in place that makes sense for Alpine.
Okay. Chief Barton.
Megan, you want to take him off mute real quick for us?
I am.
Yes, sir. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Yeah, we can hear you chief.
Okay. Your thoughts on the, on the noise?
I've been reviewing different ordinances that different cities are imposing. And it's basically going to boil down to possibly picking and choosing what we would like to implement. I will say what, what Eric touched on is the Round Rock city ordinance covered a lot of stuff. Also the measurement of decibels. And we do currently have a decimal meter that we can measure the decibels. So it just, it's going to depend on what the council would like to implement. I'm just going to put together some different ideas and let you all take it from there.
Okay. Yeah. Cause we need to find what a standard is on the decibel reading. That's equal to everybody because you know, it's not only the, the crystal bar. There's other businesses out here that do provide live music at times. It does tend a little loud late at night.
Right. And I, I am still waiting on some policy to get back to me that I've requested from different departments in different cities to see what they're doing in, in different areas.
Yeah. Cause I can hear the music from the crystal. I live probably about a mile away. When I go outside, I come inside and, and you know, my house is pretty well insulated and I don't hear it any longer. But yeah, it's pretty, pretty vibrant out there.
Yes. And our, our current ordinance that we have, it, it, it's mainly focused on vehicles. It doesn't really cover the music coming from a outside stage, if you would. So that's, that's something that I'm putting together so we can look at it.
Okay. Yeah. And one of the things to really note is section 14 dash 211 in this ordinance, it really maps out that measurement standard. And, and I think that's going to be critical for us here in Alpine. I mean, you have to map that out because we, we get a lot of anecdotal feedback. There's apps on phones that measure dB, all that. And we want to make sure we're real clear on how we're going to measure, you know, I, I'm, I'm a fan of following the NC standard. And, and like the chief said, we've got a tool to measure that. We'll certainly have a backup tool as well. But I think that's, that's real critical. We understand and we declare that in the ordinance.
Right. Because yeah, I think, you know, measuring off your phone, every phone's probably going to measure differently.
So we To some, to some degree, you're absolutely right.
So we need to do, we do need a standard of measurement for that. And, you know, one thing on the vehicle, I think we need to really address that also because, I mean, forever, you know, that I've lived down in West Texas. Everybody just loves to hear their trucks and all their mufflers making all that noise and the motorcycles. And some go, I think a little beyond what they, what they should have on there. So I think we need to probably overhaul the whole, the whole ordinance.
One final thing to think about Eric is that there has been some litigation over this and I need to review it to make sure that we're not getting into something that could come back to bite us. I don't think we will, but this, this is, is something that has come up before in Texas.
Any more on that from the, from the city council?
You'd expect nothing less if I didn't have a.
The way done you, you lead the way.
So one, you know, the, the example you included in your chief from, for Round Rock, I think is, is particularly well done. And I know when you go through and edit it for all of the paragraph numbers and everything else, you also take out the city of Round Rock, which, which does pop up a couple of times. And, but I think what's really important is talked about earlier, tables one, two, and three, I think are really important. I think when it comes time that we're ready to go put this ordinance into effect, I think it's going to be important to put together a couple non-ordinance slides that make it really simple about how this thing works. non-ordinance slides that make it really simple about how this thing works. So you heard Judy earlier, because she's one of the ones I get a call from regularly and her friends, because they live in Ward Five, and, you know, Mayor, you're a mile away, yeah, I've got concrete, double insulated windows and everything else, and I can hear the crystal up here, and I'm far enough away, which says it's clearly blown out the decimal meter if we're to put one down there. But where it gets measured, and what the timeframe is gonna be, in my view, is gonna be one of the big sticky points. You're from Judy, say, you know, hey, kind of like, I think, what'd she say, nine-thirty, ten o'clock? I don't think that's gonna fly, but, and so Rod, we're gonna need some help from you on what makes reasonable sense, particularly on Friday and Saturday, but I think that is gonna be putting together a couple of slides that really make it straightforward about bars and musics for what I'll call the regular establishments, and then the special permitted activities, whether it's Cabal Poetry, Viva Big Bend, all of those, because my sense is the legal challenge will not come from consistent implementation. The legal challenge will come from the bars that say, hold it, you're allowing Viva Big Bend to show up and blast out on Friday and Saturday night up until two o'clock in the morning, but you won't allow us to go do that. That's a case we will lose, so we really have to think about how that works and the implications for music festivals that we all love dearly, but we know we're gonna have to think about, you know, how we, how we can get those amps cranked down at reasonable hours and be consistent across the board. So I think if you're working on that standpoint, this will work out fine, and then there's no doubt in my mind, we're gonna have a couple of bars that, no matter what we do, are gonna come in and say, screw you, city, I'm filing a suit, we'll address that. We just want to make sure it's gonna be sustainable when we're consistent across the board.
We're still a college town after all.
Yep.
All these kids party.
Yeah, I'm not worried about college, it's, you know, it's the, you gotta be, you know, a certain age to drink, it's not the college issues.
You know, you have a great point on that, you know, that the ordinance is gonna have to be equal to everybody. Have the parades also, no, you know, they don't also want the sirens any longer. We have to have.
And put that, to the mayor's point, put that in there too.
Right, because we have to have a good balance where it's a happy medium for everybody. So it's not gonna be an easy test, I think it's gonna be something we have to do a lot of footwork on, or actually, chief. I'm sorry.
We'll get through this, we'll figure it out.
We'll get it.
In this stuff.
But, yeah, some of them are pretty sticky.
Anyway, those are my thoughts. Anyone else?
Anything else?
Nice job, chief, and if you want some help, I'll be happy to help be in the weeds with you, I'm sure I've got a couple constituents who are personally vested in this as well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any more?
Thanks, chief.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to the action items to be accomplished by a brief set of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable, action items limited up to ten per meeting after being called upon by the mayor, Mayor Protan. Citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own a business or property in the city, limited so that Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. City manager.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and City Council, the first action item is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six dash zero four for the USDA. That is just a resolution to allow us to take those monies Marcy outlined at last council meeting for the mower purchase at the airport.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six dash zero four for the US Department of Agriculture grant to buy the Kubota tractor in the sum of forty thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any discussion? And we do need this past, folks, I've seen that poor tractor on its at the airport, been there several times when it's been up for maintenance again, and I think it's on its last slate. So, any more discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, fantastic, thank you. Okay, item two, city manager.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and City Council, item two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six dash zero five, TDM and craft certification for the city of Alpine. This resolution allows us to target the Corona relief funds, and we don't have a definitive item that we would spend the dollars on yet, but there are six items that you have to measure. The first allocation is one-fifth of our total amount that the city's been designated. So the total amount's three hundred and twenty-two, the first fifth would be roughly sixty-five thousand six hundred. I did put quite a bit of information in your packets about the thermal scan cameras, because one of the key things that we're looking at as a city is enabling our city locations to have thermal scan and temperature checks to help provide a safer environment, so. You know, certainly we'll have to entertain a motion, and I can discuss any items further.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six dash zero five on the Texas Department of Emergency Management and CREF certification for the city of Alpine grant submittal.
Okay, is there a second?
I got a second.
Okay, thank you, sir, now we go to discussion. City manager, would you like to expound on that?
Yeah, so, you know, the key is, you get the first sixty-five thousand upfront, but you gotta demonstrate that you're following the guidelines that TDM outlined. If you don't follow those guidelines, you're never gonna unleash the rest of the dollars. Well, guideline four is really talking about health and safety of your public in your community, and one of the things that I certainly am concerned about, and I know others are concerned about, is as things begin to open up more and more, and then we start getting to the fall, how do we make sure we're creating safe environments that have the least probability of a virus coming in? One of the things that we know specifically is that testing people's body temperature is a good indicator. Now, some people are asymptomatic, we know that, but there are also a lot of folks out there that have elevated temperatures, whether they've got COVID, or they've got other flu or other things, and they're going into places of business and doing work. And so, not just visitors coming into our offices in the city, but also employees. And one of the items that we're researching right now are these thermal scan cameras that should come in, beeps whether you, your skin is showing the elevated temp, and then we can use the thermo temperature scan and validate whether they hit a certain threshold or not. So that's one of the items that we're looking at. First thing we've got to do is, is, you know, pass the resolution, so we get that first sixty-five thousand, and then we'll come back at our next council meeting and really delve more into how specifically we're gonna spend it. As Rod Potten and I had discussed this past week, worst thing we can do is take the money and spend it on some frivolous deal, because we won't be able to unlock the other eighty percent.
Eric?
Eric? Yes.
And just curious, the, these resources, aside from the temperature scans, can they also be used to purchase test kits? Antibody test kits, for example, or other kits that can help to verify whether anyone might be infected? That the city can use, and I guess work with the health community to implement with employees, city employees, also retailer employees, et cetera?
Yeah, yes, sir, so councillor Olivas, you touched on, yes, the first section, medical expenses, the third bullet point does allow cost of providing COVID-nineteen testing, including serological testing, so standard testing or serological for employees or even in the community. Right now with our employees, we've authorized COVID testing through our TML Health Program through the rest of this year, but yes, these monies could be used for that as well.
You know, those cameras are gonna be probably used into the future now, with the way this pandemic is going. So to me, that would be a good investment to protect our employees and also that's in the lobby. So, I mean, I think, you know, we're not living in normal times anymore. So I think it's a fantastic idea with that. Also, going back to the CARE Act, I did have a video conference call, not only myself, but folks from the COG with Senator Cornyn this morning, and I did mention the fact about the CARE Act, and we're very concerned because not only of the pandemic, but also with all the riots that are going on in our country, that monies could be diverted. So I stress that strongly that, you know, for him to really look into it and help us out in obtaining the rest of the monies, I think it's like, what, eighty-five percent? Or eighty percent is what we're due, so that was mentioned at the meeting this morning, sir.
Yeah, thank you for attending that meeting, Mayor.
Yes, it was a good meeting, good meeting, real positive, and I'm glad that he did allow time, he had a very busy schedule, he was on the floor giving a speech, so he found time to meet with us for about an hour or so this morning, so that was good. Because we're pretty much, you know, the rural areas were forgotten, and I'm glad he did take the time to listen to our concerns, and hopefully he'll get back with us with some answers to what the questions we posed to him, and said that we were free to call his office and that talk to his staff, and they will get back with us, okay? So, any more discussion on this?
No.
None? Okay, the motion was made and was seconded, all those in favor? Raise your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, the motion carries, thank you. Okay, we'll go to item two, city manager.
Down on my.
I'm three, I'm sorry.
Let me scroll down real quick, apologize, I had a lot of data on that last one. Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the release of the waterline easement near the south end of Cactus Street. Information is in your packet, we have a motion, and I can explain in a little bit more detail the work that Rod and I did on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the resolution for the release of the waterline easement near the south end of Cactus Street as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, okay, we'll have a discussion.
Yeah, so, Mayor and Council, this was an interesting easement. As Alpine formed many years ago, a lot of times easements were gained by guaranteeing people a certain quantity of water. And this is one of those where this pipe was laid off of South Cactus Street, kind of on the south end of town, you know, southwest end of town, and we've since abandoned the use of that pipe. We, you know, we just simply don't use it, we think there's probably some cracks in it. You know, it's not something that we want to pressurize and maintain. It's in the county as well, it's not in the city. And there's an individual out there, Mr. Snellson, he would like to get water. I think he's got a well on his property, and he's got to continue to dig deeper and deeper and deeper. And so, as he had visited with Scott Perry and Johnny Marquez and myself, talked about using that particular pipe, we did not want to re-energize that pipe, and so we thought, well, potentially we could sell it to him, create a tap back in our infrastructure, and then he could re-energize that pipe and use it out, it runs about fifty feet from the back of his property. In the process of doing the research, Rod discovered this old easement that was in place, and, you know, with his legal opinion, and I agree with him, he says, you know, Eric, really what you need to do is just abandon, the city just needs to abandon that easement. You know, we abandon the pipe, and then if Mr. Snellson goes back to the current owner of that property and works something out, he can do that and come and potentially order a tap from us and connect on, but we really need to get that easement off of our books because of that commitment of water that went along with that easement.
Mayor and council, this easement is an example of some of the old, bad easements that the city has that we should try to clean up. It required the city to give away six hundred thousand gallons of free water every year to the property owner in return for having the easement. So that was a free water for perpetuity, and so we really weren't in a position to convey an easement to a third party, where we're gonna be stuck in the middle giving away free water to keep the easement alive. So we don't use it, we're giving it back to the property owner, and we're getting rid of our obligation to provide free water to the property owner. And, but, once again, this is an example of some of the other easements we have in Sunny Glen and north of town that we probably need to revisit as time goes by.
Right, it's a win-win situation for the city, either way you look at it, so. Anybody else who has a comment on it? Nothing? Great, I'm surprised.
I did all the research on it, I read it, understood, and says, yeah, why give away free water? Six hundred thousand gallons a year, remember, we use about one point eight million gallons a day. So it's not a huge amount of water, but we don't need the headache.
No, we don't, no, we don't. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on it, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank y'all very much. Okay, we'll move over to council comments and answers. And let's see, we'll start with Maria Curry, you're looking very relaxed.
Hey, I really enjoyed all the presentations, it was a great meeting, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Olivas.
No comments, great meeting. I do have a question, as we get out of regular session, get back to executive session, we need to use a new ID and password, is that correct?
Yes, sir, the information I sent over this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Everything is okay.
Okay, Mrs. Cubelo.
I think we had a great meeting.
Okay, and Councilman Stevens?
Well, I'd probably said enough already, but yeah, great meeting, lots of good stuff to talk about, and you know, when I went back and looked at my clock today, you know, we all spent a fair amount of time going through all this, so Eric, thanks to you and your team, and Cynthia for getting all of this out, and for Megan keeping us on track as we work our way through this, lots to cover today, so thank you.
Absolutely, great meeting, and our staff outside is doing a fantastic job. I mean, they're all over the city, repaving streets, working on that alley, which is looking great, I go by there at least once a day to revisit, and I've seen where they have replaced some old gas line that's deteriorated, so that also saves an expense to the city. And so I want to thank them for that, they're doing a fantastic job, Eric, great job during this crisis, and the rest of your staff. So with that said, then we'll go ahead and entertain, we're going to executive session, or let's, before we go into executive session, let's go ahead and take a quick recess.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess we're taking a recess.
Okay, what time is it?
Actually, are you guys gonna do a motion to take a recess and go into executive so I can stop recording?
Yes, ma'am.
So, why don't I make the motion that we move into executive session so that we can cover the appropriate action relative of the Parksmith Hill, Parksmith and Cooper contract updates, and to discuss actions, if any, regarding the old Crystal Bar lawsuit against the city of Alpine.
Okay, I'll entertain a second on that.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, okay, so we're terminating the regular meeting, and we'll. Oppose, like sign. Okay, so we're terminating the regular meeting, and we'll take, what, about a ten-minute break?
Your call.
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break then. And what time is it?
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two, okay, so we'll be back at, uh, eight twelve. Motion's made in second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We're back in a, in regular session, and the time is?
Eight fifty-two.
Eight fifty-two, okay.
So we got eight minutes before we have to.
Yes, well, let's do this real quick. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we take no action on the Park Hill Smith and Cooper contract.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The none, all those in favor? Okay, all opposed? So motion carries. I have lost my, my video.
We got you. We can see you.
Okay, very good. Okay, and on the second item.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we take no action regarding the old Crystal Bar lawsuit against the city of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we adjourn.
Okay, I need a second on that. And it's not debatable either, so the meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Seven minutes to spare.
It was a good, long.
You guys are good.